Good evening, welcome to the Falls Township Board of Supervisors meeting for Monday, March 24th. We'll begin with a salute to the flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America, and to the public force of justice, or the nation under God, indivisible, and omnipotent.
Thank you. Mr. Galloway, can you call the roll, please?
Jeff Borowski, John Palmer.
Here.
Aaron Mullen, Jeff Dent.
Here.
And of course, I'm here.
All right. Item one, Mr. Clark, can you comment on our executive session?
Yes, Mr. Dent, the board held an executive session prior to the start of tonight's meeting to discuss several personnel matters, a matter of litigation, and a matter involving a collective bargaining agreement.
All right, thank you.
And I think I'm about to be corrected because we had an executive session. When? On March 11th, to discuss personnel and litigation.
All right, that takes us to item two, public comment. Bob Jones.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. I'm here on behalf of Waste Management.
Hold on, your thing's not on.
Sorry about that. Bob Jones, 10 near Wood Lane, Levittown. I'm here speaking on behalf of Waste Management to discuss a couple of changes that we're going to put in place for the waste and recycling collection services for the township. This plan was born out of a necessity to improve some service issues that we've been having over the last couple of years, as well as to help with the safety of our employees and the way we pick up the waste of the township. So what I wanted to do is Judy handed out a letter that we're going to be sending out all the residents, wanted to give you guys a heads up that it's coming, and I'll just read it here. Falls Township residents, as you know, Waste Management has provided free waste and recycling collection services to Falls Township for more than 35 years. It has been our privilege to serve you with the trust that our services have proven to be valuable to you and your family each week. WM is committed to provide the most efficient and cleanest service available to all our customers. We recently converted our local truck fleet to an automated collection system. The system provides everyone with safer collection, reduced litter, and overall cleaner community. In the next few months, we will deliver to each Falls Township resident new trash and recycling carts to collect and transport their materials to the curb for collection. You may have noticed this and your surrounding communities have already begun using the automated collection cart system. This letter provides you with some preliminary information about the upcoming equipment changes. We will still provide you with the same number of weekly collection services that you're currently receiving. So it's twice a week, waste pickup, once a week recycle. By using the new state-of-the-art waste and recycling carts, our new automated service and collections will be more efficient and require less time in the neighborhoods and more residents can be served on a daily basis. The efficiencies may change your specific day of service, but you will be informed of any changes long before they occur. All updates and communications about the new collection service will be mailed directly to your home and be posted on the Falls Township website for references. We look forward to continuing to serve each Falls Township resident in the best way possible. So two things, we're going to be changing the way we pick up the waste and the, some of the days that it's picked up now. The problem we have in Falls Township is the routes are all unbalanced right now. I think we're picking up 70% of the township on Mondays and Thursdays and 30% on the Tuesdays and Fridays. We want to get that to a 50-50 split. It's better for our trucking and logistical situation. So a third of the township will have their days changed. We will only notify those folks that are going to see a day change. So that's the first thing we're going to do. We have a communications plan that we put together that we're going to roll out over the next two months in hopes of keeping the public well-informed of these moves. So the first move would be having the day changes switched for those 30% of the residents that are going to get moved to a different day. And then after we get that rolling for about two or three weeks, then we'll start notifying about the carts. And then sometime in June, late May, early June, the cart delivery will begin, and then we hope to have this service up and running by the end of June. That's the plan. If you guys have any questions for me, I can try to answer them. If not, I have the Hauling District Manager here to help us with this.
You know, a lot of people aren't going to be happy about this.
I understand that.
Right.
Yep.
So what are you going to do about the bulk disposal days?
Bulk disposal will be on your second waste day pickup like it is now.
So you just leave stuff out at the curb and they'll pick it all up?
Yes, sir. Yep.
What about the areas of Levittown with these little streets that you can't get up and down? What are those people going to do?
I believe we surveyed most of the area, and we may have one or two spots where we still have to use a rearload truck, and we'll do that, and it'll be still using the carts, but the rearload truck will be one disposing of the waste versus the arm.
So the streets that are, you know, where people are parked on their streets, they have to put their trash cans in a specific spot? How does that work?
Yeah, so we're going to be sending out information to show you where to locate your cans, how far apart to locate them. I mean, our best advice is to put one on each side of the apron of your driveway. That's probably the best. But there'll be more information to follow about that. We also would like to do a couple of public, I don't know what you want to call them, presentations, I guess, for lack of a better term, somewhere in the community between now and the time this starts, so that we can show folks what the carts look like, how to space them, all that kind of stuff. So that was one of the other requests, too, Mr. Chairman, is for us to have the ability to work with your staff to schedule these public events, and also if we could use the Falls Township logo on all of our correspondence.
On what?
On our correspondence, the stuff we're mailing out along with our logo. So those were the other two things, but we're going to try and stay ahead of this in the community with a lot of communication and get people, you know, on board. Is it going to go flawlessly? I doubt it, but we're going to do the best we can to make it that way.
Yeah, and one concern, your people addressed with me when we met last week, or two weeks ago, you can get more than one can for trash, is that correct?
Yes.
And they have different sizes as well?
Yes. Yes, we're going to offer two different sizes, I believe, because some folks, mainly seniors, these are big cans, they're 96-gallon totes. They might not be interested in that, and they're not going to be able to use all that anyhow, especially with two-day-a-week pickup. So we'll offer them a smaller size, something a little more manageable.
Any questions, Mr. Palmer?
No, I think Brian just answered it. So people can go up to two rubbish cans?
Yeah, well, there'll be an option for a second rubbish can if it's required.
Okay. Any public comment? Anybody else want to comment while we're here? Tony? Is that appropriate?
It's fine. I don't think Mr. Johnson would mind if you had a question.
Can you cut to the mic?
Right now, don't we have the option for having up to five cans at the curb side for pickup?
Actually, the agreement is two.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
Mr. Jones, how big are these totes?
96-gallon.
96-gallon, they're pretty large, John, and, you know, like I said, I think you're going to find with a twice-a-week pickup, I mean, the other communities that we're working in with this system now, we're only doing once-a-week pickup, and that's Middletown and Bristol, and with the twice-a-week pickup, you're going to find it's more than adequate, I believe.
I was just wondering, I assume that these rubbish cans have wheels?
Yes.
Regardless of size. And then a suggestion for presentations, usually the library lets us to do, like, big presentations if people want to come or not.
In Folsington?
For Bucks County, right behind, just our regular library.
We're staying in Falls Township.
That's not in Falls Township.
Does it have to be?
Yes.
Well, then again, we're not in Falls Township here either, but.
As much as we can be.
We're going to be at the senior center. So we've already got that date.
Just curious if the new collection system is also going to result in lost jobs? Is this a way to get rid of, or not get rid of, but, you know, change the manpower so you don't need as many people on the trucks, more automation?
So, so, good question. That's one of our biggest issues with the way we're currently picking it up, is we can't find enough staffing to work the back of the trucks. But the folks that are working those jobs will have the opportunity to actually move into a better role driving one of these new automated trucks. You know, we train the folks, we can get them their CDLs and move them up into those positions because we are going to put a few more trucks on the road to get the township picked up more efficiently. So, and all the trucks, I don't think I mentioned this, are going to operate on compressed natural gas, too, as well, so they're environmentally friendly.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, just sorry, one quick question. Recycling, I think you mentioned there's also going to be new bins for recycling, so the existing recycling bins that we've been either getting one free from the township or purchasing extra ones from the township, those are, stop using those, and then there's going to be a separate recycling bin, again, one bin, two bins?
One bin. One bin for recycling, of course, I'm sure there'd be an option if you needed an extra one, but I don't think you will. Same size, 96-gallon, smaller size offered if needed, so, and, yeah, and then it'll discontinue the use of the old bins and the ones that the township was selling.
All right, thank you. Any other names for public comment? You already had yours. I'm only kidding. Tony Batiste, I'm only teasing.
Although I suppose it is slightly relevant, has the board received the report that the township supposedly paid for regarding the financial input for the closing of the landfill, when it does close? Not for a while.
What's this, then?
Supposedly, there was a report that was paid for by the township.
Yeah.
Regarding the closing of the landfill.
Yeah, the PFM report.
And when will that be made public?
I don't know. Would that be made public, Mr. Clark?
Not anytime soon. The board has not acted on that report in any way, so it's not a public record as of right now.
But it's something the township paid for, we should be able to look at it.
It's not a public record.
Okay, thank you.
Any other hands for public comment?
So Jennifer Metzger, Falls resident. I guess I'm not following why it is that some things are public or not public. We're a little bit concerned.
Look at my world.
Yeah, we're a little bit concerned about, you know, the status of the second stadium field at Pensbury.
Second what?
We haven't, the stadium field that the engineers are looking at. We're kind of curious, like, what the timing is with when decisions are going to be made for Pensbury. We know that, like, Levittown Lanes is tomorrow at the Planning Commission, but we're just wondering, like, we're not seeing a lot of stuff public, and we're just wondering if there's a reason why certain things are being held back or.
I believe the second field was approved already a couple of years ago, right?
It was, as part of the, I think they called it at the time, the Falcon Field.
Yeah, that got approved when the football field got approved.
The first stadium field did.
They both did.
The second one did?
Yeah.
Because when we talked last month, we were under the impression that it was under permit consideration for inspection.
Yeah, I misspoke on that. It was part of the land development that was originally submitted for the high school football field. The second field was on those same plans and approved with that land development approval.
So it was already cleared in April of '23?
Say again?
It was cleared in April of '23.
Yes.
Is that that practice field that's right behind the stadium? Yeah, they've been talking about that for a long time.
Yeah, so with it being a turf field, though, we have a problem because of the runoff, so we have a problem with not only the water, and now they're doing the geological studies for the actual schools, so we know that there's a water problem on the field in case you were questioning us, and then all the plastics and everything. So this board was commendedated by some of the nonprofits, like for birds and different things and wonderful things that we're doing in this area, but we're turning right back around and we're approving things that are destroying our wildlife and our environment. So I'm a little bit concerned, and none of it's posted. Like, even with this, this should have been something that we all knew, not had to ask about.
The second field, you mean?
Yeah.
When was that? Do we remember?
April of '23.
'23?
'23, I believe.
Yeah, that's when you approved the first stadium field. Doesn't say anything about the second.
Yeah, they were both on the same plan.
They were both on the same plans.
Good for them. Thank you.
Yes. All right, that takes us to item number three, certificate of appropriateness, 139 Yardley Avenue. Replace existing asphalt shingles with new asphalt shingles. Pretty straightforward. Any questions or comments, Mr. Galloway?
No.
Mr. Palmer?
No questions.
No questions? All right. Any public comment needed? No? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Seconded.
Motion made a seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Item number four, Star Tours Conditional Use Hearing, 394 Lincoln Highway.
Good evening.
Mr. Murphy, good seeing you.
Good to see you.
Mr. Dent, if we could have a motion to open the hearing?
Is there a motion to open the hearing?
So moved.
Motion made, is there a second?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Dent, this is a conditional use hearing. The applicant is Star Tours. The property is located at 394 Lincoln Highway in Fairless Hills, 19030. The tax parcel number is 13-008-051-00A and 13-008-051. The present zoning on the property is HC Highway Commercial. This conditional use hearing is to authorize the use and occupancy of the above-described property or the property I've just mentioned for Star Tours, which would serve as the new corporate headquarters for Star Tours and would consolidate into one central location their corporate headquarters, which would consolidate Star's planning, management, and maintenance activities in one central location. The ad for this hearing ran in the local newspaper on Tuesday, March 4th, and again on Tuesday, March 11th. The code department has posted the property. A court reporter was scheduled for this evening, but they have not yet appeared. We spoke with Mr. Murphy, the applicant's attorney beforehand, and he has agreed that we will allow the court reporter to do the transcript from the videotape of tonight's meeting, and we will move forward. The applicant is represented by Mr. Murphy, and you can present any testimony or witnesses you would like.
Thank you.
Before we begin, since this is a conditional use hearing, if there is anyone present this evening who would like party status for this matter, they should come forward and ask for party status. Party status enables you to question the applicant's witnesses and to present any testimony you would want. You will still be allowed to make public comment even if you do not have party status, but party status will allow you to cross-examine any witnesses Mr. Murphy puts forward or to present any of your own testimony. Is there anyone this evening who is present who is requesting party status in this matter? Seeing no hands, Mr. Murphy, you may proceed.
Thank you, and recognizing that and recognizing you have a significant agenda following this one, if the board would allow me, I can prepare and offer an executive summary of the application and hopefully maybe speed things up if that suits everyone.
That would be fine, and all that we would ask is that after your executive summary, you call your witnesses up, you ask them if they heard your summary, and if they were called to testify, if that would have been their testimony.
Agreed.
And they'll be available for questioning.
Agreed, thanks. So as Mike indicated, this application involves the desire of the Borowski family that has owned and operated the business for over 75 years to relocate its corporate headquarters from Hamilton, New Jersey, where they lease, to a location on Route 1 that they would purchase and own and operate. As Mike suggested in the application, this is intended to be the corporate headquarters of Star, which would include a maintenance component, a planning component, a fueling component, and the storage of certain vehicles, but not many. It is in a location adjacent to the Sunoco Gas Station, and in between that and the Faulkner operation on Route 1. Very little exterior modifications are going to be required to the property. It's all mostly interior. We are proposing a small, less than 500-square-foot addition for an internal wash bay to accommodate that function, but otherwise, we have received the review letter from Joe's office of February 18th. We reviewed it with your Planning Commission when we met with them more recently, and Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of it. I can talk about, although I don't know if I need to, some of the general criteria associated with the conditional use. In your ordinance in the HC district, you allow car or bus fueling and bus maintenance as part of the conditional use, because this use didn't fit entirely within those couple parameters solicitor and staff recommended. We treat this application as a conditional use itself so that we cover all the individual component parts of what Star wants to do there. I think there had been, I don't think it exists anymore, a misimpression as to what this may look like. Most of us, I'm guilty, too, think of a bus terminal or something like that, you think of the worst things like Septa or something else would have. That is not what this is. This is, as I think all you know, and Pete and Sandy Borowski can speak briefly to it, and I think they should, exactly the nature of the type of bus that we have. I think we're all familiar with them, and there's not very many that are going to be here because they're all out on tours. So it is not intended to be a large-scale bus depot. That's just not what it is. There will be employees that work on a daily basis that do the planning of the tours and all the other administrative things, the back-office work, if you will, and we're intending to clean up significantly the property, especially the buffer in the rear where it abuts the few residential neighbors that exist, and we explained in great detail at the Planning Commission what that was going to look like and how it's going to be better. So I think, overall, we've addressed concerns that people have about lighting, to make sure that the property is adequately lit. We've identified and designated specific areas for ingress and egress of the buses off of Olds Boulevard, not on Route 1, which I think addresses a concern that Joe's office had about that. The building is otherwise going to be upgraded, and it will be harmonious with all the other buildings in the neighborhood, and I think it's a really great opportunity for Falls to have a, not a tenant, but a landowner, property owner, that's going to relocate its whole business to Falls. So, and I know we all enjoy taking business away from New Jersey when we can, so. But, that being said, I think it's a great use and a great location for Falls, and I think we can talk about more specifics of the plan if you'd like. I think I would have both Justin Gianotti from Dynamic Engineering, he's the engineer that did the plan, we can talk about, Justin can be sworn, and we can chat about that, and either Pete or Sandy Borowski or both can be sworn and talk about the business operation, which I think is, would be helpful for the board to understand, so.
Good evening, everyone, Justin Gianotti with Dynamic Engineering.
So, Mr. Gianotti, since this is a hearing, I'm going to swear you in.
Okay.
I don't know if we have a Bible, but do you swear that the testimony you are about to give in this conditional use hearing is the truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
And Justin, you heard me offer an initial summary of the overview of the application and what it entails, correct?
Yes.
Had I asked you individual questions, would your testimony have been consistent with the summary that I offered?
Yes, it would. So just to walk through the plan and existing features pretty quickly, the plan on the screen right now is an aerial exhibit, that's the facility today. The yellow line is the perimeter of the property, it's approximately 5 acres, 5.1 acres in the Highway Commercial District. You'll see that there's a building dead center in the property and cars parked all around the perimeter. It's a largely impervious property, serving right now as a, like, automobile repair shop, previously a movie theater. There's also two points of access to the property. There's a, I'll call it a full movement in off of Lincoln Highway and a restricted right out onto Lincoln Highway at the top of the page, which I can show you, yes, again, right at this point here. And then there's another one, which is a little bit harder to see on the aerial because of the tree cover, out to the back of the page off of North Olds Boulevard. So if we can see right here off the back of the page here. There's also a cross-access which allows the Faulkner operation to maintain access to both Lincoln Highway and to North Olds Boulevard. What is being proposed? If I switch exhibits here real quick, conditional use plan. Full screen. So what is being proposed is just a repurposing of the facility. There's really no new impervious being proposed, we're going to be restriping areas for bus parking, storage, and maintenance, but the facility itself already has maintenance bays along the back of the building, they're going to be converted so that, from cars to bus capable, right along the back here. And then the building addition, which Mr. Murphy discussed, that less than 500-square-foot addition is right here, because this is going to serve as wash bays for the facility. So buses are going to enter, coming in mostly off of the signalized intersection, coming in through the back on North Olds Boulevard, which allow them to access either the maintenance bays, the wash bays, or to be parked for short-term storage on the property. There's employee parking, which is a repurposing of the existing parking lot along the front and along the side of the facility, but all points of access are going to be maintained, and no additional access points being proposed. Along the back of the property, Mr. Murphy talked about the enhancement of the existing buffer. This part property right now is actually, you can't see it here, but there's cars, there's a double stack of cars being parked along this whole stretch right here, right along rather dilapidated fence line of the existing properties right here. What's being proposed is a screen buffer, trees, fence along that back area to screen that residential component, really the only residential component off of the existing commercial use, which we are going to be maintained. That should.
But in lieu of, as Justin said, there's multiple levels of cars parked in that, like, front to back in that location, we're going to eliminate that closest row of parking against that joint common fence that we'll replace and put one on our side. So there will only be one row of parking, not two going forward.
And that is right along this bottom line here.
Right.
I don't know if there's any questions, general questions, but that's basically it. We're really trying to repurpose and maintain the existing facility and operation or existing features as much as possible, albeit restriping given the change in use from more cars to a bus use.
All right. If not, then I'd ask either Pete or Sandy or both that come up and talk just very quickly about Star.
Can you identify yourself, please?
Pete Borowski.
Sandy Borowski.
And again, I don't have a Bible, but if you can raise your right hand, and do you swear that the testimony you are about to give in this conditional use hearing is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
And Sandy and Pete, you both heard both myself and Justin offer.
You have to use the microphone, please.
Right, you heard both me and Justin offer commentary on various aspects of the operation. Had we asked you individual questions, would your answers be consistent with the summaries that I provided?
Yes.
Okay. Why don't you tell a little bit about the history of Star and how this facility is actually going to be used, the number of buses, the fact that they're mostly out making money on the road, not sitting here idle and all that?
Yeah, thank you, guys. First of all, thank you for having us. We're super excited about the possibility of relocating to Fairless Hills. We're Bucks County residents, we've raised our three sons in the area through Pensbury Schools, and we're really excited about being more a part of the Bucks County community and Falls Township in particular. Ed mentioned this is a third-generation family business, Sandy's grandfather started it in 1947. As he mentioned, the main components of our business are tour and travel, as well as motor coach. Our tours go all over the country, so. So from going to Nashville to Cape Cod to Mackinac Island in Michigan, we even have a cross-country trip for 27 days. So on the tour side of our business, which represents over 50% of it, those buses are out on the road on multi-day trips. So it's important to understand that. As we look at our little GPS thing, we see our little dots all over the country. On the side of the business where we're renting buses to people, and these are motor coaches, Prevo, HC45 motor coaches, so very high-end, we maintain them, you know, to the nth degree. The kinds of work we do for that would be school groups flying in from, say, California or Chicago, visiting the East Coast. So we'll pick them up in New York, we'll take them to Philadelphia, and then down to DC over five days, and then come back and do another trip like that. That's a big portion of our business, as well as things like university travels, university teams playing in other areas. We do work for Pensbury, we do work for many other high schools in the area for their field trips. And that's a general feel of the kind of work that we do. Sandy, anything to add?
Really, we focus on travel. Of course, motor coach is the, you know, origin of our business, but we're very focused on travel now. We started a business six years ago, and our oldest son was a rising senior at Pensbury. And all of our, his friends and our friends' parent, our friends, said, "Why aren't you bringing our kids home from University of Pittsburgh and Penn State?" So now we have a whole separate business called College Break Bus. We do use our buses, but we also use buses from, all the way from Boston down to DC. And those are the kinds of planning activities that we're doing in the office as well.
All right. Thank you. We met at a staff meeting a couple months ago, and, you know, we went in detail over the business, and it's really a great business. I didn't tour your facility in New Jersey. I'm familiar with it because I work over there. And then it's going to be a good fit here in Falls Township. You know, you said a local family and bringing a business from New Jersey here, it's a great opportunity for Falls. Any questions from board members, Mr. Galloway?
No, I just remember when that was the Eric Penn Jersey movie theater. That was a long time ago.
So just a funny story there, not to interject. One of our, one of our mechanics today worked at that movie theater. So when he found out this location, he says, "What is that location?" And so he was, he could be coming home, in a sense, we'll see.
It looks like a great use for the property.
Thank you.
Mr. Palmer?
I have a couple of questions. How many employees do you think you guys are moving over to Falls with this move?
Yeah, so in total, full and part-time employees. Now, not all of these work in the office on a day-to-day basis. We're about 100. In the office, we have about 30 office staff. We've got about 25 full-time drivers, so they're out with the buses. We have a staff of about 20 tour directors, who are also out with the buses, and then a maintenance staff of about five.
And a staff in Maryland.
True, yeah. Yeah, so we do tour planning for a company that we acquired in Maryland called Air Tours, E-Y-R-E. So very much like our business, we do all the planning and marketing, and all that organization happens out of this facility. Just the departures are out of Maryland, and we use a different bus company to run the buses for those tours in Maryland.
Excellent. When your buses are either out of service or you're replacing, do they sit on lot for a long time?
Generally not. If we're doing our job, they're out on the road. There may be some times where they've got a little bit of a bigger job, a maintenance job to do, but usually they're in the garage during that time. And if they're doing, you know, an engine overhaul or something like that, it's in the maintenance bay and being worked on in there.
Okay. And I'm assuming you're aware of Pensbury High School right there with the flow in the morning. Are you going to factor that into your business model?
We will. And something, you know, Mr. Murphy mentioned, really the nature of the business is you have a vehicle coming and going sort of throughout the day. So it's not as though, it's not like a transit operation where everyone gets in at 6:00 AM or 7:00 AM and everybody goes out at the same time. All the jobs and tours and, you know, are all happening at different times. If you think of when your kids might be getting picked up for their field trip, it's after school at like 3:00. If it's, you know, people getting on a bus to go to Cape Cod, that bus is maybe leaving a little bit earlier. So it's really all over the map. It's just kind of, you know, spread out. So it's not a big, you know, rush at any one time.
Not a traditional rush hour.
Yeah, it's not like, like we work near a UPS facility, and you see, you know, literally 10, hundreds of UPS vehicles coming at the same time. It's nothing like that.
Thank you so much, guys.
Yeah, thank you.
Anything from our professionals, Mr. Jones?
No comments.
No, nothing.
Any public comment? I see no hands. Oh. Go ahead, Tony. Sorry, I didn't see you. It's twice tonight, right?
I was trying to block her out.
Just a couple of questions. All these people that are going on your tours, are they going to be parking there?
So we have 10 or 12 pickups throughout the region. So for a given tour, you could get on, and that's in Mercer County, Bucks County, down in Philadelphia. So this could be one spot, but if you think of a bus picking, taking 50 people and from multiple locations, maybe 10 of those would be getting on at this location, so.
But you're running more than one tour, so...
Depends on the day. It depends on the day. So in the fall, it's busy.
You guys have to share the mic.
In the fall, it's busy. You might have three tours on a given day, but January, February, maybe total between the two months, you have one. So it just depends. So you could have anywhere from maybe one car to 15 cars at the most parked there.
Okay, but with your employees and everything else, are you going to need overflow parking? And if you do, where are you planning on having that?
We won't need overflow parking. We've done the calculations already on the parking.
Okay. One more question. The entrance that you have coming off of Business Route 1, will the buses be using that entrance?
So the buses, just get the mic here. The buses are going to be using the signalized intersection. That's the, if you look at the intersection of Lincoln Highway and South Olds, right here, or North Olds right here, all buses will be coming in off of the signalized intersection.
Once in North Olds and-
Yeah, enter the site. So they'll use the signal just so they can have a timing.
Because that's going to curve, and it's hard to see.
Yeah, just from a safety perspective, we wouldn't want them doing that, so we want them at a controlled intersection.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Clark. What do we do now?
If there's no more public comment, you should have a motion to close the hearing, and then a motion either to-
Is there a motion to close the hearing?
I move to close the hearing.
Sure. May the second, in favor, aye?
Yeah, you just closed the hearing, and now a motion to approve or deny the application. And this would be a good time to remind the board members that because of the quirk in the second-class township code, the vote tonight must be a majority of the whole, meaning all five of you, and not a majority of the quarm, meaning the three of you who are present. So a two-to-one vote would mean that the motion would fail. So all votes tonight need to be unanimous.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second it.
Motion being seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Great. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you guys very much.
All right. Item 5, NP Falls Township Industrial Phase 3.
This is the right one? Yes.
Good evening. Mike McGinnis from Begley Carlin here on behalf of North Point. We are here tonight to discuss the re-conceptualized version of Phase 3 of North Point's development. You may recall, we were in front of you over a year ago for the old version of Phase 3, which was approved by this Board of Supervisors. Phase 3 originally depicted four different distribution facilities, much like the rest of the North Point campus. The site that we're looking to develop is approximately 247 acres. This has been revised, you can see the plan before you, that Eric Clase has prepared to now depict primarily 10 different principal structures. They range from approximately 112,000 square feet to 217,000 square feet in size. At the end of the day, after this is built, it will create what we're labeling a digital infrastructure campus. So that is an alteration, obviously, from the distribution facilities that were depicted previously. This was originally designed spec, as is the majority of the campus, the KTC. It was approved, there had been some environmental work that was being done at the site, and then North Point ended up entering into an agreement with a new user, which necessitated the redesign and the plan change. These structures are going to be all one or two stories in height. There is going to be a significant reduction in traffic just by the nature of the redesign and user and the redesigned and use for this plan. We have a clean review letter from the Jones Engineering Associates, and I believe that we have Jeremy Michael on with us remotely. I don't think he was originally planning on being here, but he is here this evening. And given the unique nature of this use and how it's different than much of what North Point previously has proposed and has been approved by this board, I would suggest maybe we have Jeremy give a brief overview on this use, and then have Eric go through the site plan and how it would work if it's approved. Then if it would help the board, again, Eric's with me and can walk through this for a moment if you'd like.
Do you, and do you want me to go through it some more, or we have questions?
No, I just think it's really interesting. Two million square foot of data center, a data-
Multiple structures.
That's awesome.
Yeah, and I had discussed briefly, I think it was when we were at the planning commission, if this board remembers, going back in time when North Point originally purchased the site, we were estimating, we weren't sure because of the speculative nature of how North Point develops or properties, but we were estimating an approximately 75% warehousing, distribution split with maybe a 25% manufacturing. And this is not manufacturing, but I think this is in the spirit of sort of the diversification of this site. So we're still going to end up with the warehousing and the distribution, obviously, which we've been very proud of and which has been quite successful. We think having this as a component of the KTC build is going to end up being a really, really nice complement and mix at the end of the day, both based on the traffic layout and the type of jobs that are created. Thank you.
Mr. Palmer?
I've got a question for you. The power plant that's there, how much of their power they send into the data center property?
Use your mic.
Oh, sorry. Can somebody answer that, or you didn't hear me?
Sorry.
The, the power plant that's on-site, how much of their available power is this data center taken from that site? And you made mention that you clean the site up. Is it a brown site to a green site at this point? Last question. You mentioned about more technical jobs. Are these jobs remote access jobs, or are they on-site jobs? Thank you.
How many megawatts of data are we talking about here, total? Understood. Professionals, Mr. Jones, any comments or questions? I saw your review letter.
Just one comment, Mr. Dence, that we've seen this infrastructure designed twice now. So we're comfortable with the preliminary final, since we've reviewed the stormwater management over the entire site.
Mr. Clark?
No, we've had the opportunity to review the plans. They're very clean plans, and we have no comments.
Any public comment?
I didn't know it.
If this is using a public utility, is that going to impact the businesses and residents
I don't, I don't know the numbers, but I imagine compared to what US Steel used when it was in full operation, it's nowhere near it.
Okay, and the other question is water, because you need water for the coolant. And where are you getting that water? And are you recycling it?
Any other public comment needed? All right. I guess that's it?
Yes, there'd be a motion to approve the preliminary and final land development for NP Falls Township Industrial LLC Phase 3.
All right, I'll make that motion.
This is Resolution Number 202511.
202511?
Yes.
Resolution 202511. Motion being seconded, all in favor? Aye. There you have it.
Thank you very much.
Do we, can we get a copy of this picture that's on the screen?
Sure.
All right, that takes us to item number 6. That's why Mr. McGinnis is still standing there. NP Falls Township Industrial Phase 2, Building 6, amending final land development.
Let's see if I can figure this out. All right, good evening. Mike McGinnis, again, on behalf of North Point. Rather than the case for Phase 3, this is an amended final for Building- this is an amended final for Building Six. You may recall also Building Six was previously approved by the board. We recently went back to the zoning hearing board, I believe it was in November, to get approval for an accessory structure setback and width at the point of entrance for ingress and egress. This, similarly to what we just discussed with Phase Three, relates to the fact that, again, North Point had got approval and actually constructed the exterior of the structure itself to facilitate, at the time, what was envisioned to be a one million, thirty-five thousand square foot facility for distribution. Since then, again, this will be redundant, but North Point came to an understanding with the end user and like we just discussed, this is going to be designed so that the final use is going to be data rather than distribution. So really, there's not much. I have a list of what's changed, but it's very, very similar in terms of the layout from what the board approved previously. We went to the Planning Commission, got recommended approval for the amended final, and we have no additional waivers other than one relating to a security gate that we're installing. The rest of it is all will complies. And again, the review letter from Mr. Jones' office is very simple. So I have Jeremy and I have Eric Clayes with me as well.
So this has already been approved once. You're just adding an accessory structure and changing the gate?
Yeah, the inside, I mean, there's some modification for access driveways, loading docks and things like that, but it's very, very similar in terms of the exterior improvements.
Any questions from board members?
No questions.
And this is in addition to the two million square foot from the other part?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
And we can get a picture of this as well?
Sure, yes.
All right, any professionals, any comments or questions? Mr. Clark?
Again, we've reviewed this plan. It's a very clean plan. We have no comments.
No comments.
All right, any public comment?
So you were just asked whether or not we're going to have the infrastructure for the data that's being required in this area. He just told you he's changing this from storage and distribution to data. We already have a problem right now when those of us who are working are trying to get work done during school hours or school days. There's already an issue. There's already PICO browning out and having issues with their little mini blackouts for an hour here or there. So it is an infrastructure problem. What is going to happen if it really is an issue at some point in the future? Like, we're all agreeing to everything now, Star Tours is great, North Point's great. Fine. But what do we do if there really is an issue going forward? Because you know if we call PICO, they're going to be like, it is what it is, call the people. If we call North Point, they're going to be like, well, call the board, the board approved it. You guys are going to say, well, this isn't our thing, you know, we're not going to redo the entire infrastructure for the area. Do you know what I mean? Like, we're going to get circled. So she had a fantastic point. I had the same question. I didn't feel like we got an answer. I understand not everybody's going to know everything right this second.
Well, like Mr. Michael said, I think he's still here, actually, up in the sky.
Jeremy?
Um, the, the amount of power down there available is more than they would ever use. They're not getting power from Dominion Powerhouse, as Mr. Palmer asked. They're getting it right from the grid, which is, you know, I don't know, that's not really how the grid works. Like, what they're using isn't necessarily going to take from ours. A brownout could hap- no, it doesn't work that way. A brownout can happen anywhere for any reason, but the amount of power they're using is still a lot less than, like you said, is available that's down there.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? Where are we at now, Mr. Clark? This is.
Yes, there would be a motion to approve the amended final land development plan for NP Falls Township Industrial Phase Two, Building Six.
And this is Resolution 202512. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor? Aye.
Thank you.
He's still standing there. Item seven, Lower Bucks Home Builders LLC, preliminary and final land development, Falsington Tullytown Road.
Good evening. Mike McGinnis here on behalf of Lower Bucks Home Builders LLC. My client, I have Jamie McCafferty with me, is the equitable owner of a series of ten very small parcels that we've been referring to as movie lots in the township. They're located along Falsington Tullytown Road, and the ten parcels aggregate together to a size which is approximately fifty-one thousand square feet. We went to the zoning hearing board in April to get a variance to facilitate the construction. And our proposal, as you can see here, again, I also have Eric Clayes from Gilmore with me on this one as well, is to consolidate these ten parcels into one large usable lot and then construct what we're labeling as three contractor garages on site. Two of those would be approximately four thousand seven hundred and twenty-five square feet and one will be five thousand two hundred and fifty square feet. There are underground stormwater facilities, which we have depicted and proposed with this project. And I think this has been a conversation point at some of the other public meetings that we've had. I know the township has approved over the last couple of years what we call storage facilities. This is not a storage facility. This is not something where someone's going to go and they're going to rent, you know, a ten by twenty square foot unit and then store personal effects. Jamie, and he's here and can address the board if there's any questions. The intent behind this is noticing a need for local small business owners and startups to have these sort of spaces available for themselves in the township. So we discussed at the zoning hearing board, the planning commission, this is things like a plumber that needs space for their equipment. There is no traffic basically generated with this use. There are no parking. It's a one-way point of circulation. And as we discussed, there are no trucks. This is not going to be accessed by eighteen-wheelers. It is generally going to be utilized by a box truck or a van. There is no exterior storage of material. We agreed to that as a condition of approval at the zoning hearing board and are ratifying that and reiterating that this evening. There is, and I don't need to go through the waivers unless you would like to hear about them, but I will note, because it was a discussion point previously, that we do have a waiver request from Woodlands. But if you look at the plan, which Eric's prepared, you can see to the rear of the contractor garages, it's right here, if it shows up on the screen. This is a vegetated buffer between the buildings and the rear of the site backing on Route thirteen. That's going to remain, that's untouched. So you're still, if you're driving by on Route thirteen, you're still going to see a large cluster of trees. And then you have these contractor garages that would be created. And then these would be leased. Again, the idea is to small business owners in our community that might visit the site, you know, once a day perhaps. So that's the plan. We, these have been difficult lots to develop successfully, and we think we've found maybe the only real positive use that we could bring to the community with this. So I have, again, Eric can walk through this if you'd like, and Jamie's here to answer any questions about how this would function and his intentions behind the development.
It's pretty straightforward, not much different than what's already down there. Any questions from board members, Mr. Galloway?
No, good luck with the project.
Mr. Palmer? I have none. Is there anything from the professionals? Mr. Jones?
No comments, Mr. Dence.
Mr. Clark?
No, again, we've reviewed this plan and we have no comments.
Any public comment needed? Nobody? All right. Is there a motion?
So moved.
All in favor? Aye.
Thank you very much.
Right?
Have a great night.
You too. Consideration of approval for change order number four for Miko Mechanical. Mr. Taquita?
Yes. Excuse me. The board is being asked to consider a request for change order for Miko Mechanical in the amount of twenty thousand six hundred and two dollars and twenty-six cents. This is for the addition of gas regulators, grounding sewer lines, additional air drops, and an additional sink in the Public Works garage.
Any questions, Mr. Galloway?
No.
Mr. Palmer?
No question.
Any public comment needed? And anything else from the professionals? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Galloway, can you pull the board?
John Palmer?
Yes.
Jeff Dence?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
All right. Item number nine, approval for change order for QPI Electric Incorporated. Mr. Taquita again?
The board is being asked to consider a request for change order for, in the amount of thirty thousand five hundred and fifty-eight dollars for QPI Electrical Company. This is for providing circuits to the monument sign, adding additional receptacles and circuits to the site lighting, provide additional data drops and additional receptacles in the DPW garage.
Any questions, Mr. Galloway?
No.
Mr. Palmer?
No questions.
Any public comment?
Did the square footage for the building change? Because why is, why would it be that you'd need additional? It doesn't make sense.
Say it again?
If you already had the square footage established, right?
Yes.
Then why would you need additional added now? Why wasn't that part of the original contracts in quotes? I don't understand why there's so many change orders. I mean, these are standards, right?
Yeah. Can you answer that, Mr. Taquita?
The square footage of the building has not changed. In certain instances, there was items that were missed on the plans.
Not acceptable.
That were required and, or there was additional equipment that was provided that we needed to have receptacles for.
Thirty thousand dollars? That's not acceptable. I could see if you missed one or two, but come on.
All right, um, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Where are we at now? Item ten?
Ten.
This is change order thirteen and fourteen for Rycon Construction. Mr. Taquita?
The board is being asked to consider a change order in the amount of seventy-five thousand nine hundred and twenty-eight dollars and sixty-eight cents for Rycon Construction Company. This is for changes related to ceilings. There's a parapet extension on the second floor. Replace unreinforced CMU wall. Adding railing for the steps near the door. Revising, revision of door locations and types. Provide additional paint in residence floors and the interview rooms. Additional metal framing and partitions as well as furring.
And why were these necessary?
These were items that were either not on plans or they were field revision based on existing conditions.
Still can't hear anything from you?
No, no questions.
No questions.
Public comment? None. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. I'm having a really hard time hearing tonight. It's not just me, I think all three of us are.
Yeah, it's, it's because it's a different time.
What's that?
What's a hazard?
Approval for, quote, for Lero. What is this?
This is actually a deduct, change order or proposal. There was equipment provided in one of, in one of the break rooms that we found was not needed, so we get a credit of one thousand seventy-three dollars and twelve cents.
Okay, that was easy. I guess there's no questions for that, right?
Hmm.
Any public comment needed for that? No. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Next, we have our item twelve, the contract between us and our aspiring employees. Ms. Gallagher?
Thank you, Mr. Dence. The board actually considered the tentative agreement with the collective bargaining unit at last month's meeting. Since that time, we've been able to finalize the agreement and the union has signed off on this, so this is now in a form ready for the township's execution.
Any questions, Mr. Galloway?
No questions.
Mr. Palmer?
No questions.
I have none. Is there any public comment needed? None? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. All right. Item thirteen, we're going to make a motion to table.
So moved.
Seconded, all in favor? Aye. Item fourteen, we have a new truck for the Public Works Department. This is something we budgeted for?
Yes, this is a budgeted line on.
All right. This is a amount of two hundred and sixty-one thousand seventy dollars, correct? What are we buying here? What kind of truck, Mr. Arnejo?
Good evening. It's, it'll be our largest truck we have. It'll be for mostly our hauling truck, for when we're paving, hauling materials from Has many uses, but it's a fifteen-ton truck minimum, and depending on the weight when we get it, it could be a little more than that.
Any questions for Mr. Arnejo?
No, I just see the note that it's forty thousand dollars under budget.
I was, I was able to access three manufacturers for the chassis. At first, we didn't think we were going to be able to get one, like, later this year, but all three said they would be able to, and the international came in, the lowest.
That's terrific.
Mr. Palmer?
Yeah, that, that's amazing because I know we, what did we budget? Three twenty-five or something like that?
It was a little, it was three, around three.
Yeah. And what's the lag time on this and what's your place to order?
The chassis builds June, maybe July. Dennis got to go to the outfitter. So if we get it by the end of the year, we'd be lucky, but counting on it, but it's about nine months.
Okay.
Which is a lot better than it's been the last few years. As you guys know, the Ford we, the Ford we got like a year ago took like three years to get.
Yeah.
Any public comment needed? Is no hands, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Can you pull the board, Mr. Galloway?
John Palmer?
Yes.
Jeff Dence?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
All right. Item fifteen is a couple of lawn mowers, two laser sixteen-zero turnmowers, the amount of twenty-one thousand two hundred and eighty-eight dollars and forty cents. Pretty straightforward. Any questions?
No.
Mr. Palmer?
No questions.
Any public comment needed? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Can you pull the board?
John Palmer?
Yes.
Jeff Dence?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
All right.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Item sixteen, approval for tree trimming, removal of tree service bids. Matt? Taquita?
Galloway?
I don't think this is me. Anybody?
Yeah, Mr. Arnejo's.
Who's the low bidder here?
Mr. Arnejo's here to.
Um, yeah, I believe it was Dence.
All right. So there's no actual dollar amounts here that we're looking at? It's just the same rate as last year, it looks like. Is that correct? All right. Is there any questions from board members?
No questions.
Mr. Palmer? Any public comment? This is basically who trims our trees and cuts down the dead ones. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor? Aye. Thank you again, Mr. Arnejo.
Thank you. Thanks, Jeff.
All right, well, now we got landscaping bids. Who can help me with this one here?
This one's for the landscaping mulch beds.
Yeah.
For parks, entrances to Lake Pens Grant, Mako Village.
Who's the low bidder? Do we know? WDB?
Yes, they were the only bidder.
All right. Any questions from board members? Mr. Galloway?
No.
Mr. Palmer?
No.
And they've been doing this for a few years for us now.
Yeah.
Any public comment needed? Now, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. All right. Item eighteen, stone and asphalt bids. Ones, the stone and aggregate is going to go to Eureka Stone Quarry, the Blacktop and Binder to Miller Materials. Any questions from board members?
None.
Mr. Palmer?
No.
Any public comment needed? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. That takes us to item twenty, consideration of approval for a new lease agreement for Fairness Health Athletic Association. This is basically us bringing all of our agreements that are pretty much. This is basically us bringing all of our agreements that are pretty much consistent, right, Ms. Gallagher?
That's correct. The township has varied agreements with all of the ball fields, and they're on a year-to-year basis. So, what we did this year was put everybody on a consistent form, so that way it's clear what the obligations are between the township and each of the ball field, or each of the little leagues.
Do we have to do these individually, or can we do them all together?
They're listed separately, but if you want to approve them as one vote, that's fine.
All right, so there's four of them. Any questions from board members, Mr. Galloway?
No.
Mr. Palmer?
No questions.
Any public comment needed?
And while we're looking at that, this is going to be subject to final approval from the solicitor, because there might be a couple of language changes as we work with the ball fields.
You're the solicitor?
Yes.
Oh. All right. Any public comment? No? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. All right. That takes us up to item 24. Now, we have consideration of approval for donation requests for Levittown Continental and Fairlords Athletic. Same thing we do every year, we budgeted for. Any questions from board members? Mr. Galloway?
No questions.
Mr. Palmer?
No questions.
Any public comment needed?
Not having anything to do with this, but what happened to 19?
What is 19? What happened to 19?
19 was pulled from the agenda.
Yeah, we pulled the 19.
Okay, then I have no questions.
Okay. Okay, is there a motion to approve the donations to Fairlords Athletic Association and Levittown Continental?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in seconded, can you poll the board?
John Palmer?
Yes.
Jeff Dent?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
And we're not making any appointments tonight, is that correct?
That's correct.
Item 26 is the minutes from February 24th. I did watch the meetings. I didn't attend the meeting. Any corrections or comments?
None.
Excellent minutes, as always, Mrs. Pullman. Is there a motion to accept the minutes?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. We've seen the engineer's report, there's really not much new on it. Is there any questions for Mr. Jones on the engineer report?
No, he already discussed with me the progress being made at Lake Caroline. Thank you.
Any questions or comments?
No questions.
All right. Thank you. That takes us to the bill list. Let me get in here with this. We have a bill list in the amount of $3,647,599.10. Any questions or comments on the bill list?
No.
Any public comment? Is there a motion to pay the bills?
So moved.
Second.
All right. All in favor? Mr. Galloway, can you poll the board? I'm sorry.
John Palmer?
Yes.
Jeff Dent?
Yes.
I vote yes.
We have an Obermeyer bill listing the amount of $5,368. Any questions or comments? Any public comment?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Mike, do we need three people to vote yes on this?
No. Yes, you do. It's, every vote tonight has to be unanimous, because it's a requirement of the second-class township code, that it's a majority of the whole, not a majority of the quorum.
Okay.
All right. Any public comment? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in seconded, can you poll the board?
John Palmer?
Yes.
Jeff Dent?
Yes.
I vote yes.
We have a Campbell Durant invoices in the amount of $26,143.58. Any questions or comments on that?
No.
Mr. Palmer?
No questions.
Any public comment? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in seconded. Mr. Galloway, can you poll the board?
John Palmer? Jeff Dent?
Yes.
I vote yes.
That takes us to the Jones Engineering Associates. Mr. Clark?
Mr. Dent, we've spoken several times this evening about how the second-class township code requires that all votes be a majority of the whole and not a majority of the quorum. That is why all votes this evening have had to be unanimous to pass. For the last several years, you have been abstaining on the Jones Engineering bills because you have a conflict, and under normal circumstances, you would be required to abstain this evening as well. The law, though, does recognize that whenever a governing body would be unable to take any action on a matter before it, because the number of members of the board required to abstain from voting under the provisions of the section that is being referenced makes the majority or other legally required vote of approval unobtainable, then such members shall be permitted to vote if disclosures are made as otherwise provided. So, once again, you're allowed to vote this evening, and all you do have to indicate that you have, that you have a relative who works for Jones Engineering, and then you'd be able to vote.
Okay. Any questions from board members?
None.
No questions.
Any public comment? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Can you poll the board?
John Palmer?
Yes.
Jeff Dent?
Yes.
I vote yes.
That takes us to manager comment.
Couple of quick items, just to, April 18th, township offices will be closed in observation of Good Friday. On April 19th is a spring yard waste cleanup day. That is at 6 o'clock. The yard waste must be bagged in 30-gallon biodegradable paper bags or placed in 30-gallon trash containers. Branches must be no larger than four feet in length, bundled, should not exceed 50 pounds. April 19th is also Free Bulk Disposal Day. It will be held on April 19th between 7 and 11. This is only for resident homeowners of Falls Township and Tullytown Borough. This will be at Groves Landfill. If you have any additional, if you have any questions or need additional information, you can call the Waste Management phone number, and this information will be provided on the website for additional questions. April 26th is the medication take-back and shredding event. It will be on Saturday, April 26th, between 10 and 2, at the Pensbury High School East, 705 Hood Boulevard.
Thank you. This will all be on the website and on social media as well. Any board comment, Mr. Galloway?
No comment.
Mr. Palmer?
No comment.
I have none. With that, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.